We'll get started in just a moment. Mr. Fenders, you can start the Zoom webinar. Reminder for everybody who's here, again, the microphones are all turned off. Please bring them, turn them on and bring them, close your mouth when you are ready to speak. Helps with the sound acoustics, both in the room as well as for those that are watching the webinar through the Zoom meeting. Just wait another moment or two and then Dr. Morthee, you can begin. Dr. Morthee, when you're ready.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blaker. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID is 817-0851-8852 and the required password is 115228. All right, I call this meeting to order. Roll call, Mr. Blaker, please.
Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Here.
Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Secon.
Here.
Ms. Devenera.
Here.
Mr. De Silva. Student representative. And Dr. Morthee.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on March 8th, 2023, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. Copy was filed with the township clerk. Mr. Kizmarsky, would you lead us, please?
Congratulations. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we will need an executive session in the beginning today, so I need a motion to recess to executive. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Kizmarsky. We should be back in about 15, 20, all right, about 20 minutes or Mr. Blaker will let you know if it's longer. Thank you very much. All right, we're back from executive session. I need a motion to reconvene to public action meeting. Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Secon. All right, let's move on to agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. And please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. All right, I need a motion to open to the public. Mr. Denise, second by Mr. Hughes. All right, we are open to the public.
Hello.
Good evening.
Ms. Theodore, one in our place. Just a quick question about 17D, the submission of comprehensive equity plan. Just looking for more clarification on that, if that has anything to do with the equity audit, if that is mandated by the state, if that is like a bookkeeping thing for you guys, or is it something we have to do or that we choose to do?
Sure, thank you.
That's a good question. So it has nothing to do with the equity audit. Every school district is mandated to have a comprehensive equity plan based on the needs of the school district. So right now, our comprehensive equity plan, this statement of assurance allows us to extend it through next school year instead of recreating another comprehensive equity plan. In previous, when we first had the comprehensive equity plan, we created based on the needs of our district. So we talked about the test scores that you've seen.
Yes.
Females in STEM and STEAM. That was another piece of it. So it's mandated by the state.
And looking at it, it looked like it's something that came about in 2018, 2019, and you could just get it extended, but I couldn't tell if it was mandatory, chosen.
Yes, it's mandated. It's mandated.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Theodore. Okay, I don't see anyone else coming forward. At this time, I need a motion to close to public. Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Gallo. Our superintendent's report, Dr. Datura.
Thank you. There's two things that I have. First one, I'm so glad that she's here, Mr. Hughes is here. My first topic that I was going to talk about was the Harlem Wizards game that took place a week back. I just want to thank everyone who was involved. We had a great turnout of fans. We had a great turnout of staff and more importantly, we had a great turnout of our students that were fans there. And it was great to see the school community come together. It was great to see the staff come out and support a wonderful cause. And everyone there had an absolute blast. The Harlem Wizards were wonderful with our kids. They were fun to play against. I wouldn't say the basketball skill of our staff was at a high level, and I'm saying that because I was included in that. I just want to say thank you to Rich Rampola, who is an interim principal at GW, who came out. He received the fanciest sneakers award and he hit two outside shots. So I just want to thank everyone that was involved in that event. It was a great time. My son came with me and he hasn't stopped talking about it. He had an absolute blast. The second piece, I spoke about this at a previous meeting months ago. Dr. Fair and I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Jeb from Ramapo College. And we had a wonderful conversation specific to how we build our relationship within the university as well as within our school district. We talked about different learning opportunities. We talked about different professional development opportunities for our staff, different courses that we connect with them with. But I think one of the most powerful pieces of that exchange was right when Dr. Fair and I walked in. Dr. Jeb, who I'm not sure if everyone's aware, has an extensive history with the military. She greeted us at the door, shook our hands, and she gave us this coin. And the coin is specific to Ramapo College. It says the Office of the President, and then just talks about be bold, be kind, be good teammates. And she gave us this coin and she gave us the history along the lines of the military history of the coin. She said, "In all of her different experiences which are vast, she has a wonderful history in the military." The different officers, when they greet each other out of a sign of respect, they give each other a coin. So she brought us over to a table where there were hundreds of different coins. And she really was able to really talk us through the history of that experience. And it left a mark on myself and I believe it left a mark on Dr. Fair. And we talk all the time about how important relationships are and building relationships and maintaining relationships with our community. We felt it was really important to connect that to our Thunderbird Partnership Program. We have so many people in our community that have volunteered their time to come in and enrich our students' educational experiences and also enhance the practice of our teachers and partnering with them. So we felt it was important to create our own coin. So everybody at the desk, you guys should have a coin. This is something that we created and we felt aligned to who we are as Mawa. On the front, it says Mawa Township Public Schools. On the back, it says Thunderbird Partnership Program and it says Mawa connects. This is something that we would like to give to our Thunderbird Partnership participants as a sign of appreciation and a sign of respect, and it's something that showcases Mawa Township Public Schools, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Blaker, do you have a report for us, our preliminary budget?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, everybody. As is customary this time of year, and as I've stated at a couple of board meetings already, March is when we submit and prepare our preliminary budget to go to the county office for the following school year. So what this presentation is going to encompass is just a high-level view of the budget for next year. This can be broken into a four-part series over the next four board meetings. We have tonight, we have one later this month in April, and then we have in early May, exactly as you're going to be on the next slide, for the final submission of the budget for the 2023-24 school year. So what this budget does, and again, I've stated this previously, but this is going to now, after tonight's resolution, to submit the budget to the county office. We'll go there. They'll review it at their level, come back with any suggestions or comments that they have. At the time, we're also continuing to review it internally, see if there's any adjustments we want to make between now and the final submission in May. So for the calendar for the next couple of meetings, March 8th, tonight's meeting, we're going to review the revenue sources that are included within the budget, major revenue sources. We're going to discuss the tax impact of what the tax levy is for next year, talk a little bit about enrollment and how that has changed year over year, and also debt service, which is a separate component within the budget that we do report on each year and where that is for next year. And March 29th, we're going to discuss special revenue. That's another separate fund within the budget where federal and state grants are managed, special education impact for next year, special ed students that attend out-of-district schools, some general operation areas of the budget, including transportation, and then any capital projects that are ongoing or are going to be included to give an update for that. April 19th, we're going to dedicate to two of the larger pieces of the budget, benefits as well as personnel. And then on May 3rd, once again, the adoption of the 2324 budget is slated for that evening. We're just going to do an overall summary of the past several weeks and, of course, inform the board and members of public if we are making any adjustments or changes from tonight's presentation as a result of decisions we make internally or as a result of any comments that come from the county office. So for revenue for next year, for the 2324, the largest single source of revenue is the tax levy that is collected from the residents and from the businesses within Mawa. The next slide will go into a little more detail on how that's calculated and the different aspects of it. But we have a tax levy for next year of $68,834,000. It is showing an increase of 1.79% from the current year. Most often, we're talking about a 2% tax increase year over year. That's a little bit less. I'll go into the next slide why that is. That's because of an adjustment from the state that currently exists. Our tax levy for our debt service is $558,000. For anybody that has seen these presentations in other years, that is one of the lowest tax levies representing debt service for the last several years. The reason why is because our debt is slowly falling off, and there's no current new debt that is being added on. For next year, we are going to be making our last payment for the current bond issue that we do have outstanding. So following this year, barring anything, any new debt being added on, we will not be collecting any tax levy from the residents for the purpose of debt service. So it is a 50% decrease from the current year because we did have two bonds that we're paying off this current year in 2223, only one bond remaining for next year, the one we did pay off fully this year. State aid from the state of New Jersey. There's a couple different things that are included in this. We also include extraordinary aid, which is a one-time aid that we get each year depending on any extra order or special education cost that we might incur and that the board, I'm sorry, that the state of New Jersey would reimburse us for. It's representing about a 12% increase from prior year. We have other revenue, just some of the slice areas in there, rental income, interest, semi, which is special education Medicaid initiative that we receive from the federal government. That's included in other revenue. Fund balance, this is one that we are going to be closely watching. This is a little bit higher than it has been in past years. There was a change made at the state level in our budget formula and the monies that were allowed to carry over from year to year. During COVID, they did increase the amount that we were required to keep in reserves up to 4%. We were required to put that money away for the next school year. That has been reduced 2%. So that number is a little bit larger than last year because what had been 4% that we were able to reserve and keep is now only 2. So the difference, that additional money, is coming back into the budget for the 2324 school year. So that number is a little bit higher than it has been in years past. And again, it's one that we're going to closely watch to make sure that it is at a level that we can sufficiently maintain going forward. Then special revenue, I mentioned it on the last slide, represents any federal and state grants that we receive, federal grants including IDA and some of the title funds. It also includes the state grants, non-public grants that we do receive. We do have a handful of non-public schools here in the township, and we are the pass-through for some monies that the state provides to them. Absent from this is any ESER and any remaining COVID money that we received from the federal government during the COVID pandemic. Those monies would be included in the 2223 school year, and I'll discuss them at a future meeting when we discuss the special revenue account. So for the tax impact for the 2023 calendar year, now we're speaking, we transition when we talk about tax impact from the fiscal year to the calendar year. It is dependent on a couple of variables that we get with assistance from the township. So for the township of Mawa, there's a net valuation taxable for the 2023 calendar year of $5,791,000. That can be described as our tax base, that our tax levy mentioned on the previous slide of about $68 million can be spread across. That valuation taxable did increase from calendar year 2022 to 2023 of a little bit over $5 million. And then when we are discussing what the tax impact is to the homeowner, we look at it across two different ways. One, as for every $100,000 that your home is worth, on the bottom, it's a $1,000, from the school district, the K-12 school district tax for next year. We $1,192 for every $100,000, and it represents a $13 increase from the prior year. And then the average value of a home in Mawa for the 2023 calendar year is $479,000. That value has increased $1,700 from the prior year. And at the very bottom of the slide, the tax impact on that average value of home is $5,723. Major drivers of the tax impact, I wanted to highlight that when, on the previous slide when I spoke about revenue, I talked about the tax levy on the operating going up 1.79%, the tax levy on the debt service decreasing about 50%. When you combine those two together, the overall tax levy for the district is, or for the township, is going to be an increase of just under 1%. It's going to be a 0.9% because of those two balancing each other out. That's why the increase is so low. The major drivers for that, as I said before, is a decrease in the debt service levy. And then also for public law, 2020 Chapter 44, this was a law at the state of New Jersey that was done, and you may have heard me mention this last year as well. We were in the same situation where, based on the implementation of that law and its effect on health benefits and what we can offer our staff, the law, the intent is to have a savings go back to the taxpayers as a direct form of tax relief. For the last year, it was about $220,000. Ourselves, along with many other districts, challenged that because it was brand-new, and there was a very confusing formula as far as how it was determined. We were successful last year, so that reduction, while I spoke about it at the preliminary budget hearing, at this one a year ago, later when we got to our final adoption, that money had been returned back to the district. I'm going to be issuing a similar challenge for this. Right now, it's $139,000, is the amount that the Chapter 44 calculation says our tax levy should be reduced. Again, I want to challenge that just to ensure that that is an accurate number. And if the challenge is successful, I wanted to make a note on that. And we do go up to a full 2% tax levy, the difference would be an increase of just $1.20 for every $100,000. We'll have all this information by the end of the budget timeframe before our adoption of the final budget in May 3rd. Okay, enrollment. Enrollment is something that we also discuss as part of the budget process, some of our budget determinations and budget figures that we have. We do allocate or do review on an enrollment basis and on a per pupil basis. Enrollment also, we look to see the transition of students going from one school to the next, transitioning throughout the district. Our enrollment is down slightly from last year. We always look at the October enrollment. Historically, we've always used October as our indicator. That's when some state aid reports that are based on enrollment, we have to collect and submit to the state. So 2,678 students in grades pre-K through 12, and those are only students within our district. Any students that attend a non-public school, or, I'm sorry, not a non-public school, who attend a special ed school outside of Mawa, or any students who might be attending any of the county vocational or technical schools are down on the bottom. So they're not included in that overall number of 2,678. The 2,678 are just the kids that are in the six Mawa schools. It is a decrease of about 18 students from the prior year. The next topic that I'm going to be speaking on is debt service, just to dive into a little bit more detail on what I've said already. This is a completely separate fund. It's also referred to as Fund 40 within the different funds of the budget where we collect and we expend any funds related to any past bond issues that the voters of the township have approved. So we do have one bond that is still outstanding. We're expected to make the final payment next year in the 2324 school year. The next slide will describe a little bit of what that bond was for. The other bond that I said before, we made the full payment this year, it was the initial bond issued about 20 years ago for the building of Lennepin Meadows School. So the bond that initially helped to fund the building of Lennepin Meadows, we did successfully pay off, make the last payment in the school year 2223. For next year, the breakdown of what the payment is going to be is $545,000 of principal and $13,625 of interest. The bond that we do have outstanding that we're going to be making the final payment for last year was a bond that was originally issued in 2003. It was successfully refinanced in 2011 as interest rates came down to help achieve a lower payment for the remaining life of the bond, for whatever was remaining. The original bond was for additions and renovations at Mawa High School and at Rampapa Ridge Middle School. That is the final slide that I have for this evening. As I've said, we're going to touch base on different areas of the budget throughout the next several meetings leading up to our final summary, final adoption of the 2324 budget on May 3rd. Any questions, Roman? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you very much, Mr. Blaker. Dr. Fair, do you have assistant superintendent report this evening?
I do.
Thank you very much.
So our goal, particularly at the start of this calendar year, was to highlight the great things happening within our schools. So we've been attempting to highlight pieces of programs from each of our school buildings. So this evening, we wanted to highlight some cool things that are happening over at Joyce Kilmer School recently. As we know, the JK has unveiled their Innovation Lab as of last year as part of our commitment to ensure more STEAM-infused learning to our fourth and fifth grade students. Here, we have students working with bristle bots. So bristle bots are used as an introduction to robotics and coding for our fourth grade students at JK. Bristle bots are assembled robots where the motion of these robots is caused by the transfer of kinetic energy from the motor vibration through the robot to the ground. So the bristles' rapid motion from the vibration enables the robot's locomotion. So these devices promote positive engagement and allow students the opportunity to learn about the components, to help robots move, explore ideas around how robots support the world around us, and challenge our students to think critically. Here are a few pictures of our students, most recently, working with our bristle bots in the Innovation Lab. So they're called bristle bots because the top, the piece of it is the top of a toothbrush. So the bristles are actually the legs of the robot. So I also want to show you, so Ms. Giovinazzo and Mrs. Dublier, two of our awesome fourth grade teachers, you can see the students working in motion there. Those were recently tweeted. So it just gives you a sense of what it looks like in action. Pretty cool, right? So that's our first piece. The second piece is earlier this week, our Mawa High School Guidance Department has communicated with our families of our current sophomores and junior students about our internship/externship program that we've preliminarily shared with our Board of Ed. So the email speaks to how Mawa High School is providing students with the opportunity to get firsthand knowledge of their chosen career pathway through participation in our summer internship for rising seniors or our summer externship program for rising juniors or seniors. So in that email communication was a video that was created by Mr. Pascal, the principal, with the assistance of Bobby Kalman, our new supervisor of technology integration. So we want to just share that here. It's about a minute and a half. So what we've learned over the years, particularly recently, is the importance of overtly showcasing the great things that are happening instead of assuming that everyone knows. So big props to the high school for doing just that. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Mike, would you, or Trista, would you mind just getting the lights? All right, thank you. All right, my report for this evening, so we have a congratulations to Luke Blazuski. Am I?
Blazish.
I said it right?
You're right.
All right, Blazuski. He's named as a National Merit Scholarship finalist. So out of the top 15,000 students are picked from a pool of 1.5 million juniors who took the PSAT in 2021. So congrats and best wishes on hopefully him securing a scholarship and making Mawa proud. Shrek is the musical going on. Trista might be sharing more information. Am I stealing your thunder? Starts tomorrow through Sunday, right? I don't, I, I was seeing on the Twitter, there's like, there's face makeup, there's all, I mean, this is looking very fancy. Yeah, exactly. I know, very exciting. The Model UN Club participated at a conference in Jersey City against 17 other schools. I mean, just great stuff going on. Mawa placed fourth of 10 teams in the 2023 Mid-Atlantic Indoor Winter Guard Show with a performance of Come Fly With Me. And interesting to see some of this stuff on Twitter, so if you have a chance, like, check it out. Even, even I think this is up on the Twitter.
I think so.
Everything is.
You reminded me to retweet.
Oh, you're retweeting as I, as I speak. And I was watching. I mean, I, everyone's doing a great job. Mawa Indoor Percussion placed third place with their presentation of Perfect Plate in the Regional A-Class Competition. We also had a second team All-County Nod for Marissa Lovergeta in women's basketball. And then, of course, we have our runners who continue to, you know, showcase in the four-by-four-hundred-meter relay team of Zoe Merriman, Alec Clankie, Sienna Canenberg, and Harley Taylor. Fifth place finish at the Eastern Championships. I mean, I'm assuming that's like, it's a, it's a bigger, bigger event. And then, you know, we have Zoe Merriman, fifth for the T-Birds and the 800 meters. So again, this is just a few highlights of all the wonderful things, and it's exciting to see all the things happening in our district. All right. Board committee reports. Who do we have this evening? Ms. Daveniero, are we going to start with community corner? Exciting.
Brief update tonight. So today's International Women's Day. The earliest version of this day dates back to 1809 and is celebrated annually still. Just a day to pay homage to the many women and their contributions across society in general, also pay homage to the women's suffragette movement that came before us. So just a special thank you to all the women in my life who have guided me and toward me to be the person that I am today, and I hope to continue to pass that on to my daughter and generations to come. Outside of that, spring sports are open. Registration's on tmsv.com. They will be closing soon, like, very soon, so please get on and register. Baseball, softball, lacrosse, spring track, all open now, with season starting at the end of this month. As Dr. Morthe said, Mawa High School has Shrek going on this weekend. Just a special thank you to Mrs. Kizinski at the high school, who is taking her Homework Club Boys and Girls to the show on Sunday. So my daughter will be there, and it is the talk of the town right now. They can't wait. Last week was Read Across America in all of our elementary schools. Essentially, every day was just a different theme, activity dedicated to reading and the importance of it. There's lots of great activities and discussions and classes, all culminating with Dr. Seuss's birthday. That leads into this week, which is One Book, One School at our elementary schools. Each school has a book that they choose where all the grades read the same book. So they read chapters in the class, they read chapters at home, and then it just brings about conversations and activities in the classrooms each day, and it is very, very exciting. Fond memories of when my children were in the same school, they were reading the same book, and it was very nice sibling bonding instead of sibling fighting, and we loved it. Kindergarten registration is here. Pre-registration needs to be done by 3:15. All the documents can be loaded into your Friday Parent Portal. There's also a document collection day on 3/24. All the information can be found on the township website, but just want to make sure those dates are out there. That being said, you also need to reregister students. If your child is going into fourth grade or ninth grade next year, they need to be reregistered. Documents can also be uploaded into Friday Parent Portal. Very, very easy to do, so definitely do that sooner than later. All of our summer programs are live on our website as well. This includes Camp Invention, kindergarten kickstart, summer music programs, and safety towns, so please register now. There are really wonderful programs that we offer through the school district. And definitely register before spots are filled. And that's all I have tonight. I did not make it to the Access For All meeting this week, but Mr. Gallo is going to give that update for us.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Daveniero. Mr. Gallo.
I have three committee reports.
Wow. We might just turn our microphones off.
Sit back for lunch and enjoy the show. First, on the budget, I want to thank Kyle and his staff for assembling all the numbers, and obviously, community administration for maintaining a very ambitious, innovative, and progressive education program while also delivering it at a relatively low tax increase for our citizens in an environment where inflation is running 6%, 7%. Coming in with a one-some-odd percent tax increase, I think we're getting very good value for the program, for our money. And it's always important to remember that, I mean, we just had the presentation a few weeks ago on the strategic plan update. We have a district that is not standing still, a district that is striving, innovating, pushing boundaries, taking risks, and some of that costs some money, but we're able to do it within the financial envelope that is, that I think the community should be very proud of. So I'm very thankful for your efforts and for everything that came together to make this happen, and the community should continue to expect good progress in the future. Negotiations, we're having our fourth official meeting tomorrow. We continue to make good progress and have a constructive dialogue with our partners in the MEA, and we look forward to the progress we will be making tomorrow. Finally, on Access For All, I covered for Trista, barely, but during the beginning part of this year, we tried to establish a stronger partnership with Access For All, and it, I consider Access For All one of the, one of the gems of our community. We have many, these little diamonds in the rough that really define Mawa as a unique and hospitable community that is engaging all of its citizens, including those who are intellectually disabled, handicapped, autistic, a variety of people from a variety of work, places, that are often on the periphery of our society. Access For All services them greatly, and they have tremendous, they have great events. But our partnership with the school district and Access For All was really about communication, trying to make sure that, because many of the clientele, if you will, for Access For All are from our school district. So we worked with administration, we connected with administration with the Access For All leadership, and they now have a communication pathway to get the information about, out about the events that Access For All is holding. But more importantly, at the high school level, we have Sarah Kizinski and the Habitat Humanity Group volunteering at the events, eagerly participating and volunteering at the events. They have a softball program coming up, and they already have exit, the Habitat Humanity students have already signed up to help out. They were, they spent probably 15, 20 minutes lessons meeting praising the district and our students for the service that they're delivering to the Access For All community in our district. So I just wanted to convey the thanks and gratitude of Access For All to the board and to our staff and our tremendous students who are doing this great service. So that's my report.
I would just follow up on that real quick. Township perspective and having a daughter in the high school, the signup sheet gets filled up very quickly, and there are kids that can't volunteer and that want to volunteer. There's a, there's a waiting list to volunteer. So our kids are really stepping up, and it's much appreciated by the Access For All community. Yeah, thank you.
Great collaboration. Thank you very much, Mr. Gallo. Do we have other committee reports this evening? All right, then, from instruction curriculum, let me give you a quick update. We had our February meeting. We discussed that there's, Nikki Van Esch came to us to report there's two new courses in the business department. Fundamentals of Investing, which is a semester elective, and Honors Marketing Class, which will be a full-year elective. We also are, you know, thankful that we're looking at expanding our offerings, given that business administration as a pathway is the most popular at Mawa High School. So again, we're bolstering our curriculum in keeping with other Burton County districts and taking care and highlighting student interests. So again, thank you for continuing to be innovative and bringing new courses to the district. We also had an update from Natasha Carrera and John Pascal about January PD for elementary and secondary teachers. Again, much of this PD is run by fellow colleagues, which is a peer-to-peer model, which has really been tremendous, and staff have choice, and a lot of exciting things and a lot of exciting interest on PD Day for them. We also got some information from Dr. Bovino and Natasha Carrera about data teams update, particularly at the K through 5 levels. So again, a lot of exciting things happening, and we look forward to, you know, continuing our great work in instruction curriculum. That's all I have. All right, let's move on. Board member remarks, do comment. Anyone have anything to add additionally? All right, then let's move to old business, our minutes. Need A, we have A and B. So the January 25th and then February 15th. Motion, Mr. Kizmarski, second by Ms. Secon. Mr. Blaker?
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Secon.
Yes.
Ms. Daveniero.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Yes. All right, let's take new business, A to S. All right, Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Hughes. Thank you. Okay, do we have any discussion? All right, then we got to vote. Mr. Blaker?
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes, abstaining on 17D.
And Kyle, I'm going to abstain on 178. Check numbers 110397, 110460, and 110541.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Secon.
Yes.
Ms. Daveniero.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Yes. All right, let's take new business, personnel matters. This is A to S. All right, Mr. Denise, thank you, and a second by Mr. Kizmarski. Mr. Blaker?
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Secon.
Yes.
Ms. Daveniero.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Yes. Public questions or comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Dialogue 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. All right, I need a motion to open to the public. Ms. Secon, second by Mr. Gallo. We are open to the public.
Hello again, Luther Theodore. Two quick questions. One is just a structural thing for the meetings. Are we going back to executive meeting at the beginning, or executive session at the beginning of the BOE meetings as a matter of?
I think, I think it just depends, Mr. Theodore. In, in today's particular meeting, there was an item that we had to vote on, so that's why it was in the beginning, but that's really to the discretion of there's items that require our attention during the meeting, sometimes they're in the beginning of the meeting.
Is there a way to inform the public beforehand to try and keep people from wasting time? I know during the, I didn't know if it was pandemic-related thing, because it used to always be beforehand was the executive session, then it changed to almost always after when it was Zoom, and then the last couple of years, and now it seems to be going away.
I mean, I think mostly, we try to keep it at the end for that reason.
I didn't know, well, that's what I've been through. I don't know if there were outliers, but they've been early.
And if there've been reasons, we have a reason if we have to do it in the beginning. Is that, is that?
Is that fair?
Suffice? Dr. Theodore, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, there are a number of reasons why we would have to have it in the beginning of the meeting. If there's action that's going to be taken on a topic that needs to be discussed or further clarified, we would have to do it in the beginning. You know, it's, it varies, so along as I've been informing the public, I think our efforts that we have out of respect of the public being here is we try to provide some sort of understanding of the length of that, of the executive session.
That's appreciated.
And if by chance it goes past, we'll come out and alert people. So we try to keep it as concise as possible, but I, I don't want to make a promise that we do that.
I don't know if it was just like a formal change in policy or if it just goes meeting by itself.
No, I mean, for the law, to be honest, for the longest time, when I first got here, 12 years ago, it was always the beginning.
Yes, yeah.
So now, there, there was no.
It's better now. I'm not complaining. I'm just, and then the second one had to do with the, the debt service that you guys have is very low, and that's really a testament to everyone here, and it's going to be a problem for the country in general going forward. But do you foresee taking on any big debts in the coming future? Are there any big projects that have to come that are going to take on a big expenditure?
Perhaps, Mr. Theodore.
Yeah, maybe it's more about the, for.
Mr. Theodore, there's, there's nothing right now that we, that the board or the district has on our radar that we're ready to, you know, publicly share, but you're absolutely right. The fact that we have no debt or will have no debt pretty soon, it's, the opportunities there if we were to, but of course, anything, as I said before, debt service, it would be obviously communicated on many levels to the community. It would be something that we would need the community's support with, their vote and their approval if we were to issue anything future. So, you know, rest assured that if there was the opportunity or when there is action by the board to issue new debt, it would be communicated because it has to be. It's required to obtain the community's support in order to issue it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Theodore. Okay. Motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Secon. We do not require another executive session at the end, so let us motion to adjourn. Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Gallo. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.